Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is two oh two P M. Welcome to a special meeting agenda sponsored by our Human Resources and welcoming ICRIMP, our insurer, known as Idaho County's Risk Management Program. Thank you, everyone. Attending our commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none. Our first item of business is a review of Cootney County's five-year loss run, and it's a discussion. I don't see Tim here.
Tim is speaking.
Okay, so who will fill in for Tim?
That means Sandy.
Okay, Sandy, take it away. Welcome.
And you need to come to a microphone. So if you just want to sit and and just push the green button, that's all you need to do. Green, there's a little button, and it'll turn green.
All right, where is it?
There, and just put it right back where it was, and it'll be perfect.
It'll pick you up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very sensitive.
I feel like I need to stand.
Well, you can if you like, but.
Thank you for inviting us today. It's been a couple of years since we've come up here and seen you with COVID and everything. So thanks for letting us come up. We brought a crew with us, your crew. So we have Kelly Poninen, who's our risk manager. Kelly has been with us just over a year, but she worked for the last sixteen years, Ada County Risk Manager for them. So she comes with a wealth of knowledge with that worker's comp and everything entails with a risk manager job. And then we also brought George Blickenstaff, who is your claims person assigned in this area. You work with him a lot. We have Debbie Ferguson. She's our newest hire. She lives here in Coeur d'Alene, outside of Coeur d'Alene and Apple. And she is another foot on the ground for North Idaho so that we have someone local if you need something from us.
Okay.
If we can't get George. And then we have Chad Sarmiento. He is our law enforcement risk manager. So he comes and does all the training with your law enforcement side of the house.
Okay.
Who did I miss? John, Debbie is here. John is your agent as well as ICRIMP's agent.
Welcome, John.
Did I get everyone? Yes, okay. So Kelly, if you want to take it away and give them a summary.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having us again. As Sandy said, I'm Kelly Poninen. I've been in the risk management and insurance industry for the last twenty-something years. I won't go into that much detail, but was Ada County's Risk Manager and ADA Coordinator for sixteen and a half years, and then went to a adjusting firm, a regional TPA, for about a year, and then was lured to the dark side by Mr. Sarmiento, who I worked with at Ada County as well. So it's great to be back in the public sector. It's what I love doing and where I belong. So without further ado, we'll go into this brief summary here. The first page just shows you, I evaluated Cootney County's claims for the last three years from ten one nineteen through March fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Of the claims that you'll see here depicted, one hundred and fourteen of those go through every coverage type that you have. So auto, property, general liability, police liability, employment practices, cyber, everything that's included in your policy. If there was a claim that was of any substance, it would be depicted here in this history. Over the past five years, I included for you, ICRIMP has spent approximately two point nine two seven five two, oh, I'm missing a number there, apologize, two point nine million dollars to support Cootney County's claims. So the big bar chart on the bottom here shows a three-year history, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and twenty-one. Two thousand and nineteen was a stellar year for you all, forty-four claims and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Twenty-twenty, we had a bit of an uptick, two forty-three, five thirty-eight, and forty-one claims. And again, this comprises auto, property, liability, and all of them together. Twenty-twenty-one, a little bit higher in cost, but your frequency was down quite a bit.
Okay.
And again, this is for the three-year period.
Okay.
So over this three-year period, and please do stop me if you have any questions at all.
Go ahead.
Cootney County's top claim category for the last three years are related to auto claims, followed second by property and mechanical breakdown. So I believe you had one property boiler-related claim that was just over thirteen thousand. So, you know, we'll talk about some of the more expensive claims and how those look. The top single claim that you all had during the three-year period was a property claim, and that was due to the big windstorm back in two thousand and twenty-one. That neared a hundred thousand dollars for that one claim. And so your remaining claims in that category would be, again, property damage related to fire and lightning. Any questions on the three-year look back?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Page two, we talked, and this is a very high-level one. We'll get into more detail later on, but just a good snapshot for you. And as a proactive approach for you all, our risk team can visit any of your facilities, any of your properties in person to go through and look for hazards and things like that that could be corrected, or we could see that could pose some potential issues for you. I've been known to climb onto some roofs and go into some crazy areas and just kind of check out and see, okay, where can we do better? And what are you doing well? And what are you doing not so well? But your property claims here, I broke out by department over the last three years. Twenty-five percent of those were sanitation, then fifty percent of those were law enforcement, then we have the fairgrounds, and then we encapsulate one of those into all departments, where it may not necessarily fit into one, but could be more commissioners or general fund area. We did have, so just so you know, canines do fall under a property technically, so a larger claim for a canine there. Down below there, we break out the costs related to these property claims. So the sanitation department, fifty-five, six eighty-seven, and again, this is for a three-year look back. Law enforcement, thirty-four thousand, two thirty. Fairgrounds at ninety-four, eighty. And then that windstorm, again, ninety-eight thousand. And we wouldn't tag the windstorm to just one of your departments. We would consider that the entire county.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to your big area, auto claims. So nearly all of your thirty-one auto claims that you had over the last thirty years, eighty-four percent of those, no surprise, come from the sheriff's office. And that's typical, pretty much, with any, well, and Chad can, Chad can attest to that as well. They drive fast, they drive, you know, to emergency situations. There's a lot of stuff in the cars that can be distractions. But eight of those thirty-one claims were also related to pit maneuvers. I broke down further down below for all auto. This is not just the sheriffs below, but how are your auto accidents happening? And what are the costs of those? So thirteen thousand, three twenty were due to backing up. Thirty-four thousand, seven twenty-five related to pit maneuvers. Eighteen, four sixty-five, so typically deer strikes, animal strikes. We see that quite frequently in this area. Snow and ice. We've got a fire. Now, rear-ending and struck others, these two categories could be either you struck someone else, or they struck you. We don't go into that much detail, but obviously it involved another vehicle, and that's what happened. Typically, we see it where one of your offices rear-ended someone else due to inattention or distracted driving. There are ways for us to break those down even further if that's information you'd like to see. Any questions on the auto? Okay. On the next page, I've got a three-year history by coverage type. Starting with auto claims, we've got one ninety-three, six sixty-five. General liability would be your slips, trips, falls, gosh, what else? So many things fall into this category, sewer backups, water, you know, damages that you may cause to someone else. Cyber-related claims, you had one of those. Police liability. Then we've got employment-related claims. Forty-five, five fifty-seven, property, again, one of the larger categories, and then that boiler machinery category. And it looks like you've had one employment-related claim in the last five years. And have you, are you all aware of the attorney-client endorsement that we have? Okay, all right. So I won't belabor that, but just knowing that if you do utilize that, it's a great service for you if you are going to make an adverse employment action, just to reach out to our, to Carl and get some information, and that waives that employment deductible. So on the bottom section here, your total claims by department. So here's how we get to see how your departments fare against each other. Seventy thousand for your airport. Countywide, again, all county operations, one twenty-three. Fairgrounds, ten thousand, two fifty-eight. Sheriff's Office, two ninety-four, one fifty-three. Sanitation, five fifty-five, six eighty-eight, and four claims. And then all others, again, ninety-five, ninety, and thirty claims. Any questions there?
Nope.
All right. So the last page here, it's fun for us to go back and take a look at how many times we've had interactions or meetings with you all. So in the last three years, we've had seventy instances where we've assisted you with either a phone call, a training, a policy review. Any, any and every question we get from your agency, we track, and we help to find you a solution or document or training. So we track all those. So in the last few years, seventy instances where we've been assistance, been able to assist Cootney County. So on the very last section of this summary, it gives you a loss mitigation plan of action and things that Cootney County can do to kind of curtail some of those more high-risk, high-frequency areas. First, just starting with that property mitigation, making sure that you've got good policies, good procedures in the event of an emergency, or, you know, the big windstorm comes, or a citizen has a sewer backup, something of that nature. You're conducting site inspections and doing walkthroughs and identifying those hazards, and those are things that we can also assist you with. And just making sure that you're keeping accurate records, things of that nature. And you can contact me for those. Auto liability for your, for everybody else aside from the sheriff's office. I'm not going to get into the EVOC car and drive around a wet track anytime soon. I have, but I'll leave that to Chad. So we could talk about some defensive driving, distracted driving. I've given you all a flyer there for a course that we will be rolling out to you in the next, hopefully, couple of weeks. It'll be an online course. And then general liability, again, doing those inspections and walkthroughs, having good maintenance and great snow removal plans, and accident and incident reporting procedures, again. And then the cyber liability. Sandy, do we do know before with Cootney County? Wonderful. Okay, so there's a whole cyber, e, e, cyber page that we have on our portal as well that helps you, making sure you're training your employees, doing that dual-factor authentication, double-clicking, not clicking on phishing emails, things like that. These, these risks are really severe anymore, and we see entities being just crippled when some malware, ransomware, something happens, and it takes, you know, being down for several days or even a week, and it's very expensive, and it's very time-consuming, and people get really frustrated. So cyber liability plans there as well. Next page here, I'm going to let Sandy go into the underwriting history for you.
Right, you've seen this before, and this is just another recap, a refreshment of something you've seen before. So it just lists out every year your contribution, and then we base your premiums on payroll and property exposures, payroll because people cause claims. And the majority of your premium is, is based on that factor. And then you can see the, the last year down there, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're just starting our rating process now for the October one renewal. Our goal is always to get pricing in your hand by May first, well before your budget. So we just started gathering the data. So you'll see a large jump up in property values. So it's no secret that property values have gone up in general, mainly because of the cost of labor, the cost of materials. So what ICRIMP did for our members is last year after your renewal, we moved everybody's building values up by ten percent. We did not charge you for that at that time. And so we, so your, your building values, you'll see that jump there because it reflects the building values going in. We're not going to push that entire premium through in one year either, and we're hoping that, that the markets will stabilize and life will somehow become back to normal. And we're going to take another ten percent and increase it again this year, again, not passing that price on to you. But that's what we have to give to our reinsurers. Our reinsurers need to know what the true exposure is of a loss, and that's how they price it to us. And to keep our partnerships good, we make sure we report, report the, what we think are the right values. You are due for another appraisal process, and so that will happen this year. So our appraisers that we hire for you, Evaluations Northwest, will be coming in to this area and appraising every building over four hundred thousand so that we make sure we get it right.
Sandy, quick question. How often do you reappraise?
Every five years.
Oh, same as, okay.
Right. But every year, we do what's called a cost modifier with our appraisal company, and they look at the geographic area. It's not across the board, so it's specific to you. So we've been trying to keep up with those changes. But we don't want to penalize our members either by having these values be so high, and there's no way that any member can recoup those costs. So we're just kind of absorbing it and hoping that the market stabilizes there. You'll see the property, the net claims for each year, the commissions, and then what we pay on your behalf for the reinsurance and our operation costs. You know, the twenty-seven, eighteen year is the one that had the one bad employment loss, but that's, that's what we expect to see, at least one every ten years. And so you're right in alignment. We're basically break even, and we love it. We love that, you know, we are, whatever we're charging in premiums, covering whatever we're paying in losses for you. So you've been a great partner. The last several years, you've really improved your losses dramatically. So that's been, been very helpful. And then I just gave you a couple of graphs, the underwriting exposure data, so you can see that year by year, the property values year by year. And then the last page is that net contribution to the program, and you can see the one dip. And then, as I mentioned, our renewal pricing, I'll get it to you by May first. I'll get it to, to John by May first. And then, just as a recap, what your deductibles are on the various coverages that we have for you, your property, your crime, your cyber, and then your employment. And the employment, when it has a note there, consultation waiver, it's going up. I think you were at seventy-five hundred, and we're moving all our counties up to ten thousand this year. But you can waive it as long as you're, you know, consulting with us. And, and you've been a great partner with that, absolutely wonderful, and, and following through with that. You've already achieved the following discounts that you see there going forward for the new renewal policy. So your sheriff's office participated in the patrol and the jail assessment, and so that's, each one of those is one percent off. And then the property and cyber assessments has been completed, so that's another one percent. And then all of the elected and supervisors took all the webinars, and that's another one percent. And I think there's two more percentage points that can come off if we get to it. That's when all of the employees take the Respectful Workplace Online. And then one more is the know-before, trying to make sure that we reach out to get everybody trained on know-before. So those are two more percentage points, but I, I expect that will come a little bit later because that's a larger group of people we're trying to target.
Okay.
And we have until the policy gets renewed to make sure those discounts come in. So that's like August first is when we mail you out your renewal billing. So I feel like we have enough time. Again, your payroll went up about four percent over the last five years, twenty-four percent, and then your property values went up seven percent this year, but that's solely because of the ten percent on buildings. That's what it netted out to, just so you can see that. We don't expect a lot of movement in premiums this year for you.
Okay.
And then Chad, did you have something you want to share?
So I know I've met some of you already in conferences and training, so it's good to, good to be here, and thanks again for inviting us up here. As Sandy mentioned, the sheriff's office has participated in the, in the assessment process, both the jail and in the patrol side. Those are both complete for this year. They were excellent to work with. They opened up the policies, the trainings that they have done. We were able to discuss the same things that Kelly brought up, reference accidents and, and what policies were guiding them, were, is it a failure in policy? Is it a failure in training? You know, what are we dealing with here? I was able to sit down directly with the sheriff and his command staff, both on the detention and the patrol side, and discuss that and changes that they've made to address some of those issues or the concerns. The assessment process is roughly about a hundred and ninety-five points of assessment for a patrol, the patrol side of the house, and roughly the same for detention. Different focal points, because obviously there's a different risk set there. I want to commend the sheriff's office for opening their door. We've actually had fantastic discussions, referenced some detention center concerns that I had, that I witnessed. I've been inside the jail, went into the cells themselves. We talked about different areas of, of concern. They've been addressed. Actually, I got invited back to come and see how they, how they assess the issue and fix the issue, and it was quite impressive, and I've been able to see that firsthand. Also, within the agency, areas that they did see risk, and I'll, and I'll take two specifically, whether it was a, someone who passed away inside the facility, what did they do to risk manage that going forward? Is there something that you could do, or is this just somebody who just passed away naturally? They've addressed those certainly in the detention center, and that's still working going forward. On the patrol side of the house, we went in, we discussed quite a bit about the driving, what training has been provided to staff, and I got to tell you that the training is quite impressive. They have attended a lot. I've already spoken with some of the Cootney County staff here. They have attended a lot of trainings that I've had. They've hosted them here. I've come here and instructed at your guys' facility for their staff. It's been mandatory. And I'm actually scheduled all the way through, I believe, May of two thousand and twenty-three for some of those trainings that I, I suggest that we focus on a little bit more. Also, in the assessment process, though, when I get it to the patrol side of the house, I certainly had a couple of concerns, reference accidents, the, the level, what are the policy state that they had there? And so we were able to discuss that, saw some policy changes that have been made since this, this last group of accidents, and that is an impressive move forward. That should mitigate a lot of slowing the mentality. Law enforcement's a very risky venture, and one of the things we do, we ask our men and women in those patrol cars to do sometimes some very difficult decisions. What they've added is some safety barriers to kind of slow them down, force them to ask, is this okay, in going forward, and hold in supervisors responsible for that. So there's been some excellent move forward. In the patrol side, I also look at the amount of officers that are, goes for both detention and patrol, but the amount of officers that have with the population that they're responsible for. So you take Coeur d'Alene out of the mix, and technically you take Hayden out of the mix. And then you, and you look at the populations that don't have a police department, and then how many people do they have to cover? Compare that to the crime rate that is there and the felonies that are there, and then I have an equation to that. Some of the calls, and I've talked to the sheriff about this, either in person or on the phone as well, their, their, the coverage rate is extremely high. They have, there's, there's certainly some concerns there. When I say cover is high, there's a lot of crime per officer. There's a lot of population per officer that is there. That, and then the square acreage that needs to be covered, it's a lot. It's going to require, in fact, in this area, it's three times of anybody else in here. That is that sideways. Part of that goes with open vacancies. Vacancies are very, they're, they're creating a risk on its own. There's mistakes that I've looked at, some of those that George and I have discussed on specific claims, that probably, if you had more staff on the ground, filled those positions, that would probably be helpful in there. And so I, we've kind of measured that out. We've had excellent discussions, again, with sheriff's office staff on that. And, and I'm very pleased. Every time we come in there, we have that discussion. It seems like we are making a giant step forward.
Okay. Any questions? Where do you see our biggest challenges?
For the, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair.
No, no, go ahead.
I didn't mean to cut you off. The biggest challenge right now is the staffing. The staffing out there, it is a crisis. The staffing levels, when you're talking the detention center and patrol, I have got very serious concerns. The making, it's one thing, and I worked at Ada County along with Kelly when I ended my law enforcement career, retired from the full-time law enforcement career, and we watched that a lot. As a jail commander at Ada County and that risk manager role that I had, we watched staffing, and there was times that you had to have mandatory overtime. Mandatory overtime took its toll, and when we had that toll taken, we would, we made some, some pretty bad mistakes. Doesn't take long. Then those mistakes, they compound. You're, then you have staff on the inside that might see a death, or, you know, you're out there and you're covering patrol, and you got too sleepy, and you made a mistake. Maybe you rear-ended somebody, not paying enough attention to what you need that is there. Well, then folks start leaving. And so it's almost a, it's, it's a two, two-prong nightmare that's coming on. So you're short-staffed, and you're asking your staff to do weeks and weeks and weeks of ongoing overtime, and then pretty soon, folks are going, that's not worth it. I can either go to another agency that has an opening that is almost fully staffed or just do something else that is there. I, I think that this is a very, very risky time that it's in, Ms. Chair.
Okay, so you touched on a couple of ratios earlier, and one of them was, I think, did you indicate that our patrol deputies were covering, on average, three times the area per deputy?
Per, not area, the, three times per population.
Oh, per population.
The population. The area, the area is the highest in the panhandle that they have, as far as like what they're covering on officers that are on the ground. The population, it is three times higher than anybody else.
When you say anybody else, you mean in the state?
In, in, no, in this, in this panhandle, in the panhandle.
Oh, in the panhandle?
There is, there is an agent, there is one other agency that is this high, and it's in the southern part of the state.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. And what did you find with detention?
In the detention, there was certainly some risks, I think in the well-being checks, and I addressed that with the jail commander at the time and now the new jail commander that is in there. Staffing levels were getting to a low point that the quality well-being checks were struggling, and it became more of just trying to get things done because you're down, you know, two or three people, and you're holding mandatory overtime for staff, and it's showing. And it showed the, the first time, and that was inside the facility, it certainly raised its head, and, and it is now, and I think it's, it's getting worse.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Probably just on to the other agencies that you work with throughout the state. I mean, are you finding that other agencies are having trouble recruiting and retaining staff?
There is, there is, Commissioner. There's different areas depending on what, on what you have. Detention staff is typically a hard one to fill that is there, especially with the, with the perception of law enforcement right now. It's, it's tough, no matter where you go. The bigger agencies, and this is certainly a part of the large agency group that is there, this is the one that is struggling the hardest of the, of the larger agencies. You can kind of just picture where those are without naming them offhand. But everybody is, is struggling. Police departments seem to be doing a little bit better. They're, they're throwing a lot more money at the positions, it seems like than the counties can, and so they always will edge. I mean, that was our experience with Boise PD and ourselves at Ada County. We were always just kind of trailing behind that, and so we're seeing that.
And they don't have jails.
They don't have jails. And so they can afford a lot different approach.
Good point.
They don't have the responsibility, and that responsibility is just huge. And, but of the counties, this one is in, and I could get into some numbers, but those are a little bit specific right here.
I have another question. Do you present this by any chance to the legislature?
I do not, sir.
Okay. The reason I raise that is obviously our taxing ability is limited, and at least based on what happened last year was further limited based on, because of the, if you want, I guess this is to be perfectly blunt, the overemphasis on property taxes, where we rank either to the, at the lowest or third or quarter of the country in terms of property taxation is. in terms of property taxation as a state. But the legislature keeps hacking away, and as long as they keep hacking away, they put us in a box where we can't meet the demands that are being placed upon us, especially with the growth that we have up here. That's what prompted my question. And anyway.
We have approached ISA. Like, we do work as a partnership with them.
Right.
Chad works with them, and because that's the legislative body, right? It's supposed to be approaching that. So we do partner with them.
Okay. Anyone else, any questions? Leslie, Bill?
Nope.
Okay. So our next item is, we're going to consider going into executive session. And so Leslie, would you like to make a motion, please?
Sure.
No, we'll do it at the conclusion. Yeah.
All right. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061F, which is to discuss legal ramifications and options pending, for pending litigation.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
2:49 PM, we're exiting executive session. Is there a motion?
I move that we exit executive session.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Thileos?
Aye, and there's no decision to be made. So anyway, item D on our, Diaz and David, on our agenda, public comment. So anyway, item D on our, Diaz and David on our agenda, public comment. Anybody care to speak?
Um, I just have a...
Sheriff, please.
Is there anybody from Icrimp that is familiar with Blaine County, Idaho? So, um, I, I'm, they only have two vacancies in their dispatch. They only have three vacancies in their jail. They much, they run a much smaller jail. And when I spoke, they only had one officer, one deputy in patrol that was a vacancy. They have very similar circumstances as far as housing. They start their deputies out at a significantly higher rate than we do.
Which for?
And dispatch. Do you believe that that attributes to their low vacancy rate?
I, I do, Sheriff. That and then they also give some housing allowance because their housing has skyrocketed. And so the sheriff and the, and the team working together on that, it certainly does. And they, Blaine will pull from other agencies. They absolutely will.
Interesting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Zach.
Zach, go ahead.
Use the microphone, I suppose?
Yep.
Just take a seat.
Zach Sifford, for the record, president of the County Sheriff's Employees Association. And I...
Your name's directly meant a little bit late. Chat's our mental.
I was just curious, you mentioned that you visited the campus, both detention and patrol.
Yes, sir.
And I was just wondering if you were able to speak about the fleet, our patrol vehicles, is that ever evaluated?
Yes, we did. And matter of fact, we spoke, we spoke about that earlier, the sheriff and I as well, but we did. The fleet was, it was a, it's a wide-ranging fleet. It's not consistent vehicle to vehicle. Age was a little bit of concern when I looked at that. Also, what were the, some of the safety equipment on the newest vehicles, a lot different than some of the other ones that are on the, they were very inconsistent in there with electronic stabilization systems that are on the newest vehicles. They don't exist on the older part of the fleet. I do. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else?
Okay.
No? That's it? Okay. I've got 2:52. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned. Thank...